What's that?
Alright, cool. Thank you. Alright, welcome. Town of Groveland, this is the Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, July 16th at 7:00 PM. We have a pretty decent agenda tonight, a lot of people in the crowd. Hello, welcome everyone. It's not a normal occurrence. Just a reminder, if anyone needs to get up and speak, we have a podium up there with a microphone, just to make sure you announce yourself and where you live. I appreciate it, thank you, so we can track everything. I'm sorry. So, what the question was, if we had an agenda item, you'd raise your hand to speak. Yes. If there's an issue or concern, we'll talk through what we need to talk through, and then we could, we would open it up to the public, if there's a public comment. You're welcome. So, this is the Planning Board meeting. We are meeting after the Planning Board meeting, there is a meeting with, joint with the Select Board. So, that is a different, a separate agenda. That's different conversation. That has to do with the Housing Production Plan. So, the Planning Board tonight is going through their normal agenda with some streets, lot releases, subdivisions, things like that. And then, at the end, when the rest of the Select Board comes in, then we'll review the Housing Plan, the Production Plan. Yep, we'll have a, well, a public comment, sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I am new as chairman, so I am a rookie here, so I'm still figuring it all out. I've only been around a few years in, on the board itself, so bear with me, these guys will help me out, they're good. Alright, agenda. First item is 106 King Street.
Motion to open the meeting.
Oh, yeah. Can we extend a motion to open?
So, motioned.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, moved.
Thank you. Alright, 100 King, 106 King Street in Katy Lane, request to release lots 5, 8, and 9 of the Katy Lane subdivision. We have subdivision, King Meadow, requirements, performance bond, charity dated an amount of $250,000, $250,000, coming to date on February, back in February. And that's what I have here, so.
So, Kevin, I was gonna say, Kevin, I see him in the back. Are those lots already done, sold, released?
No. We haven't even pulled permits on the three that were asked to be released, because we've made our.
Kevin, hold, hold on one second, I just wanted, thank you.
So, we've paid our portion of the affordable, and that's why the lots are being released.
So, that is correct.
Okay, so, we're good. So, it looks like King Street, Katy Lane, lots 5, 8, and 9 are up to par on what they need to do. Request to the board. Any conversation? Questions?
Nothing for me, it looks like everything's been, all the boxes have been checked.
Just curious, how many, how many you got sold?
So, we're on lot, we're on number seven out of 10 right now.
That's good, that's good for you. Yeah, I've driven up there a couple of times, it looks good.
It does look nice.
Yeah.
So, do you want to extend a motion?
I motioned to release said lots, what were they, 5?
5, 8, and 9.
5, 8, and 9. For the amount of $250,000. Is that the correct amount?
Is that the correct amount?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll second that motion.
Any conversation, questions? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moved.
Do you want us to sign now?
I have the Form G, and I need to get it notarized, so we'll sign after the meeting.
Okay.
And I'll get that to Mr. Covenant tomorrow.
Thank you. SD Park, 441 Main Street, site plan review waiver. Is there anyone here for SD Park?
So, I do know that the applicant, Jay Ogden, was before the Zoning Board of Appeals, I believe, last week, and the Zoning Board of Appeals did, in fact, approve the permit that was before them. I was not here when this application was presented to the Planning Board, but there was a request to seek a waiver for the full required site plan review. And based upon my conversations with the former town planner, I guess it was back and forth as to whether or not you wanted them to move forward with a full site plan review. So, at this point in time, we're asking the board to either approve or deny the waiver request and require a full site plan review.
So, I don't know if you guys remember, in that little room in there, we had a discussion with Jay, who represents SD Park.
Yep.
And I'm still of the, I like to see a site plan, since he's adding another building. I wanna see, like, fire, how they move around.
And I tend to agree, I think, with the lapse of time and the change of, whether it's water tables or anything like that, a site plan review would be necessary.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's my personal thing, I don't know if you guys.
No, I'd agree. I don't know, I, I think having a site plan review only brings bigger clarity, allows our eyes on things, makes sure we're checking all the boxes there. So, I would be in favor of the site, full site plan review on that one, for sure.
Cool.
I would echo the comments of everybody else, the time, the time lapse, the fact that the original request was different than what they're requesting now, in addition to everything everyone else has had. So, I would, I would agree with, a new site plan would be appropriate.
Awesome. Any other comments? You good? Extend a motion?
I will make a motion to, to deny the site plan review waiver for 441 Main Street and SD Park.
I'll second that.
Comment? No? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Okay. Onto 929, 931 Salem State, Salem Street, project update.
So, you have the most updated TEC comment letter in your packet. This inspection was to look at the vault after the tanks were installed and the vault was backfilled. We also received correspondence from Steven David, who is the council, and I guess the general contractor for this particular site. And he did update us with the following timeline. He stated that the steel will arrive on Wednesday and take a few days to assemble, then the cap will be poured, ComTank has begun their work, and the canopy, the canopy company is ready to proceed, and the completion date is anticipated by Labor Day.
So, they got their permits from fire, the state?
I believe so. They're still working with the State Fire Marshal's Office.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any else? No, that's good.
It's out of our hands right now.
Yep. So, this is just an update on the gas station on Salem Street, for all of you. There were some issues early on, and we have now been getting monthly updates, weekly, of all the progress of how things are going, whether they're being done right, our engineering corp reviews on a regular basis. So, that's something that we required from them, to make sure that everything was, of the up and up. So, just an update there. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay. Next up, Community Preservation Committee. Appointment of a Planning Board Community Preservation Commission member.
So, you are currently, as the chair, our CPC representative for the Community Preservation Committee, so we're asking whether or not you would like to continue on, or somebody else on the board would like to take that role on.
I have no problem continuing. I did the one year, I enjoyed it, but if someone else.
You do such a good job.
If I want to, yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
I hate to deny that.
Okay.
As long as you're, as long as you're okay with it.
I am okay with it, yes.
Chris, you're not interested?
No, I think I'm, I have all my boards covered. I'll make a motion to appoint DJ McNulty as the Planning Board, the Community Preservation Committee Commission member from the Planning Board.
Seconded.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Alright. Rebecca, other items not recently anticipated at the time of posting?
Yes, so we do have one that came through. The Economic Development Committee has been exploring options as part of their, their subgroup for revenue generating potential for the, for the town. One of the conversations that more recently took, most recently took place was in regards to cannabis, and the ability of the town to zone for cannabis. So, I do know that it was a topic of discussion, because currently, we do not allow for recreational marijuana, we only allow for medical marijuana, as required under the law. So, there was talks about whether or not the board would be amenable to looking at potential changes to zoning to allow for recreational cannabis, and what that would look like, and whether or not we're talking more so retail, or distribution, or something of that nature, so that there could be more of an encouragement to bring business and additional revenue into the community. So, the actual committee had asked if they could be placed on an upcoming agenda, so that they could come in and have, and initiate that conversation with the Planning Board. Again, it was just a comment as to, has this been explored? It had been not explored, we were a yes community, and then, once we realized that that would entail recreational facilities, then the community took it to a ballot vote and town, town meeting vote, and they became a no community. So, it was something that, you know, we didn't get a chance to really discuss in more detail. So, the Economic Development Committee is just looking to have a discussion, there's no plans, there's no company, there's no anything. They just wanna have a conversation about zoning, and what potential there could be, if any, and whether or not the board would be amenable to pursuing such.
We'd still have to go to town vote, though, right?
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. This is just conversation.
Doesn't hurt to listen.
No, so, I'm on the Economic Development Committee, and the, the task is to try to figure out how we can bring in some more revenue in the town. And we know that medical or cannabis is a huge tax rate for us to benefit from that, from the town. So, we had asked Rebecca about what the bylaws state now, and I can't remember, medical, is it growth and sale, or is it just growth for distribution?
Currently, it's both, but only for medical use.
Medical use. And then, as we know, it has progressed from where it originally was voted in, and sale, and municipal has expanded, so we wanted to just throw that option out there. So, this is just to bring it up and see how, what process would be.
And I'd say, as a fellow member of the Economic Development Committee, I, I think, you know, now that the state is a few years into the, you know, the legislation on that, I think we have, you know, we have a better understanding of what that means from some of the surrounding communities that have adopted it. So, I think of nothing else, it just warrants the continued discussion to see if it's something that we want to propose at town meeting down the road, right? Always keep in mind what can be a good tax revenue for, for the town, to help alleviate some, some of the other tax burdens that we have. And DJ's point, you know, a discussion's a discussion, I think it's always good just to bring these things back up for discussion, so we can decide if we want to evaluate moving forward or not.
So, I got a question. When it first came into the state, it was a moneymaker. Is it still a moneymaker? I mean, they were offering $1 million for a playground, food and books.
Prelimb, it's all prelimp, there's been no numbers around anything, whether anyone's, there's no interest, it's just how we can, as a town, try to bring in additional revenue, and this is something that's sitting out there that is a possibility, and, but it's not a possibility if we don't have it in our bylaws. So, it's a conversation, a starter conversation only.
Right.
There's no detailed data around any of it, because we, there's no sense until we have that community conversation.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, this would kick off the, yes, we're interested in exploring further, then we'll do the data collection, things like that. But, but again, just, just to, you know, have some very, 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 very preliminary conversations about, well, as a town, we want to look into this again.
It's one board throwing out ideas.
Yeah.
And then you come to the rest.
I'm game to listen.
That's all you can do, right?
And then, the only other item that was brought forward at last minute was, again, to have another agenda item to discuss the zoning bylaw and potential changes or updates that we could potentially make. Every year, when we go through the annual town meeting process, we bring in the building commissioner, as well as the town planner, and we work on updating the zoning bylaw, whether it might be, you know, administrative items, something's outdated, something needs to be updated to reflect the new state law, or something of that nature. Sometimes, it's a little bit more involved, as you had mentioned, and how the board had participated last year with the battery storage. Something came through with the state, and we had no zoning in place, and we needed to make sure that we were taking protective action by moving forward with the zoning bylaw, and that's what we were able to do. So, I would like to get ahead of that. I know we don't typically have a fall town meeting, there's nothing really necessarily on the agenda, per se, but having initial conversations with the building commissioner, I think it would be worthwhile to have him in to discuss some of those ideas with the Planning Board, before we start drafting and getting more involved, and if there's anything that we should be focused on. So, I would like to make another request, that we put on future zoning warrant articles onto the next Planning Board agenda, so that we can invite the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and to discuss some of the things that he's seeing, and if he has any recommendations that we should start discussing now.
Conversation is good. Yep. Sounds good. Thank you. No one has a problem with that, I would assume?
None.
Alright.
Discussion's good.
Right.
Alright. We are good there. Our next planning, Planning Board meeting is August 6th. Everyone's good there?
If necessary.
If necessary, correct.
If necessary, we can do September.
Alright. So, we are now at the time where Planning Board Agenda has completed. Now, we are going to join in with the Select Board and discuss the Housing Production Plan. Can we leave, leave the meeting open?
Yes, I would suggest that we maybe provide an update of where the Planning Board left the discussion for the Housing Production Plan. I know that the Select Board can fill you in more with their conversation, but at their most recent meeting, there was a discussion as to, you know, we're having separate conversations outside of the Planning Board. Ultimately, the Planning Board is the authority on the Housing Production Plan. It is the Planning Board that approves the Housing Production Plan, but it is advised that the Select Board endorse that plan as well. So, to get a better understanding and get all parties into the room to have that conversation collaboratively, so that it's a little bit easier for us to, to communicate back and forth, and the other hand knows what the other hand's doing, that kind of thing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is it all members of the Select Board here, or did we need a recess?
There's one member that is not present and will not be attending.
If we can proceed, I would think.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Select Board, appreciate it. So, last we left off, the Housing Production Plan, I don't think we had a full gauge of the detail of it. We sent everybody home to read through and come back with any kind of follow-up questions, responses that we may need from it, and our feeling. And I think it's a good time that gave us enough, about a month, to review it, look it over, and see what questions we have. So, we haven't even discussed the questions amongst ourselves yet. So, it's great that you guys are here to kind of throw in your, your weigh-in as well, and kind of go from there. Since you guys probably have, have your feelings on it, do you wanna open up, one of you wanna open up and discuss?
What do you think, Ed? You were the one that had the list of things you wanted to change.
Yeah, a lot of things. And it encompasses a lot of, a lot of different areas. And one of them is the 15 units per acre, and, which is, is a little excessive. And particularly, particularly the six, a little over six acres of land on, on Garrison. And it's not, it's not sufficient, not sufficient for 90 acres, 90 units. And if you read the paperwork, only 100 parking spaces for 90 units. And my concern is, what, what is the impact with the Water Department? We have now, we have people that have a problem with the water, with it turning brown. Can, can we sustain, can, with the Water Department, can we sustain that? What about the, the Highway Department? Nichols Village, out off of Main Street, is built on a Class A road, which is sustained, is sustained truck traffic. Garrison is not. So, I'm wondering what the impact is gonna be on the Highway Department. You're gonna have to rebuild the road out there at some point, with the, when, if this is built, three-story building, one three-story building, one two-story building, and it says, it will keep with the character of, of the neighborhood. Well, it, look, I, up and down that street, and I haven't seen a three-story building anywhere in that neighborhood. I, I think there's only a couple of duplexes in that area, but, so, that's, that's not true. It's going to completely change the character of the neighborhood. Only 100 parking spaces on the property. If you've got 90 units out there, plus staff members, and if you have a husband and wife move out there, and they both have a vehicle, there's not enough parking spaces. What's the impact going to be on our Police Department, on the responses out there? What's the impact going to be on the Fire Department? There, it seems like a couple of times, sometimes a couple of times a day, they're going out to Nichols Village. So, it's gonna increase the calls out there, it's going to have to increase the personnel. So, those are some of the, those are some of the disadvantages. But what about, what about increasing personnel at the Town Hall? And they say, well, it's not gonna impact the school. Well, I don't believe that, because if you have a husband and wife that decide to downsize, they move into this new project, they got a couple of bedrooms. Well, they, they're gonna sell that to some family with a couple of kids, that impacts the school. And regardless of what, what the people say, that it doesn't, it, it could, it could impact the school. Also, it's not restricted just to Groveland residents, anybody could move in there. And you gotta take care of, you gotta, first, you gotta take care of your own. And we got people in Groveland that would probably like to move into a great place like that, but you look, look at some of the restrictions, and it's, it's not exclusive to them. So, that's a problem. And this, I, I think on this whole, this MBTA project, I think we ought to get out of that, and follow the lead of some of the communities around here. I know North Andover is fighting that program now, which it's all, it's all related. But there, there is, I, I don't see any place in the Town of Groveland that you could put 15 units on an acre, and it doesn't impact the town. Some of the places that you could put a project like this, they don't have sewerage. And I would rather see the Economic Development Committee, if they, if you got a spot that, that you could put a business, I'd rather see a business in there, which is going to help our taxes. But the reason that some of these businesses aren't coming in here is because the whole town does not have a septic system, a sewer system. So, that's why a, a great area out there at Trimont, and the Economic Development Committee ought to be looking at that. Run the sewer out there, so that we can put businesses out there and cut down on the tax rate. Talk about down on, down on Center Street, same thing. We gotta extend the sewer system, and that's a problem, but I'll.
I have a quick question, because you referenced 15 units per acre. Is that, is that?
T-adjacent.
Is that in the, in this plan at all? In this?
It's the T-adjacent mass. What's the name of that, what they come, what the?
But is it called?
You're talking about the community's?
The community, T-adjacent, community of 15 acres, 15 units per acre.
So, you're talking about the MBTA?
138 units.
Yeah, the MBTA zoning, and the 3 TA zoning. That, that's the conversation that we're exploring with the consultant, Emily Inez, was Inez Associates, and whether or not the zoning would be updated in order for the town to comply, which would need to go through the annual town meeting and approval.
Right. And it's not called out?
Yeah, from my recollection, is the MBTA zoning plan called out in the Merrimack Valley?
No, I don't think so.
Commission, Housing Commission plan at all?
It's not called out in the plan, it's stated that we must comply, but it's not called out in terms of an action plan that we would need to.
I thought I saw that there was an action item saying that we were going to be moving to try to be in, to be in compliance with it. And since that's going to the state, that would be a little bit of a, you know, of a nod to them, saying, hey, listen, we're gonna try to comply. And as I understand it, you know, to comply with the Act, now, so, we've got two different things, the Housing Production Plan. Well, right, but let me talk about these two, right? So, the Housing Production Plan is about building things. The, the Communities Act is about zoning for things, and basically appeasing the state to, you know, make sure that we have the sort of blueprint for future development, if, if need be.
If need, if needed.
And, and so, if we talk about how everybody's very budget conscious, money conscious, and, you know, I, I think it would be a terrible idea to move away from the Communities Act, when all they're asking us to do right now is zone. They're not asking us to, to use one shovel, you know, so, to throw away all the, you know, government money. Let's see what happens in Milton, where they're, they're having lawsuits right now. Let's see what's going on there before, you know, we make, you know, these, these larger decisions. But certainly, to say, at this point, you know, we intend to comply, you know, that doesn't bind us to anything. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change things. Now, as to, as to Ed's comments, they're all valid, they're all good comments, right? But I don't think they really apply to the Housing Production Plan, as we're here to talk about it. The only mention of Garrison Street is that it's a conceptual housing site. That's it.
90 units.
No, I, I understand.
The last cable is 90 units.
No, no, I, I understand.
Sir, sir, don't be public comment period, I promise.
No, that's fine. And, and it's not saying, it says conceptual, so it's not even, it's not even, you know, like, we're not endorsing it, or anything. Maybe, maybe it should be excised from it, but, you know, that's, but the only thing relative, the only thing relative to Garrison Street is that it's in this, it's in this list of potential conceptual projects. So, I mean, those are, those are the thoughts on those two things, but specific to the action items, you know, I think that's, that's the thing. What do we think about the ADU discussion? You know, I'm interested to hear what the other board members think about that. Generally speaking, I would be of the opinion that, you know, people that own property should generally be able to do what they want with it, you know, consistent with, you know, as long as, as long as they're, you know, following, you know, rules and bylaws. It's, it's something that has been adopted in, at least West Newbury, you know, so I'm, I'm interested to hear what everybody else says about it, though.
I agree, and I just wanna reiterate that this is a plan, if, whether we vote this tonight and say yes or no, if, we eventually will have to approve a plan.
Right.
So, we need to, we're making sure the language in here, it appeals to what we wanna do in the future of Groveland. This does not set us and tell us we have to do anything that is in this plan. It is just a, a plan that we need to submit to the state in order for us to get additional funding in any way means possible, that Rebecca's been great at doing, getting free monies, not free, we know it's not free, we pay our taxes, and it all goes into, and we know that part of it. But at least we get to, the town kind of recoups some of that. So, this plan has nothing set in stone, saying that, and I understand and appreciate all of the Garrison Street angst here, because when you drive up that street and you see that wide open lot, all of a sudden, you're thinking there's gonna be 90 units. Agreed. I understand completely. This plan, whether it's approved, when it's approved, at some point it will be, does not mean that Garrison gets done. This is, they, on the back of it, they show all of the different properties that has potential. 150 Center Street is one of those potential. It's not saying that that is being developed, it's not saying any of that. So, I just wanna remind you guys, and I, and we, just you being here tells us how the town feels. Garrison Street, the Planning Board itself, has no say in what happens there. The public does, we do not, right? So, we have to follow our bylaws and how it goes from there. But I just wanna reiterate that this plan does not say that Garrison Streets hap, if we say yes, does not mean anything that has, Garrison Street hasn't even submitted an application yet. They don't even know.
No, but I think Garrison was mentioned when the Merrimack Valley planning, those two kids came in and talked.
Because it's, it's a piece of property. It's a piece of property. But there's, we know that there's conversation about the possibility of an application being submitted. Technically, it has not been submitted yet. There's nothing been put in front of us as the town. I think it's in the state's hands right now. I think it's technically in the state's hands, but it goes with zoning.
There's not been approved by the state yet, as far as I know.
It's really a zoning thing. But this is, this plan is separate than Garrison Street. So, that's what we're here to, we're here to talk about. And, Ed, I, I agree with you that, I mean, there's a. that, I mean, there's a lot of things that needs to be reviewed with the utilities aspect if Garrison Street ever gets applied and approved and whether the state says yes, it's 40B, whatever. Needs to be reviewed by the town. But this plan saying yes doesn't mean that it's a yes for Nichols Trust to go ahead and do it. It doesn't, doesn't give them that that option. This is just the plan that we need to submit to the state because it runs out, expires this year. And in order to get monies back from the state that we put in, we need to have one of these in place. So I just want to remind everyone that that part of what this plan is.
And to put a finer point on it, even if, even if all the things happen and Garrison got on the table, it's not even the planning board that decides, at least as I understand it, to approve the project. It's going to be in front of the zoning board, at least as, at least as, as a 40, as a 40B, right? So we don't even have, even if we wanted to do it, even if it came, there's so many ifs, we, you know, we're not even at any of those plots, but it's not even this, this board's role to make the, make the call on that. So that's something important distinction to know.
There will be many further discussions if it does, once everything kind of gets in its, on its way as it goes up the ladder. But as of right now.
If it does.
If it does, right? As of right now, it's, has no legs. It's only talk, conception. There has been a, I believe, a application into the state, I think is where they're at as a state level. They have, the state has not approved, denied anything, and we, so we have not heard a response back, so we have no idea where it's at. Can we assume that the state's probably going to say, yeah, sure, you're going to make 40B, you're going to make some affordable houses? It's possible. But we know, as a town, as a community, as boards, that it's, it's the potentials there, and we have the support, the backing of the town that says, we don't want it, so we have conversations from there. That's just how I view this. And I just want to, again, remind the people that this plan has nothing to do with Garrison Street in particular, or any other plot of land, 150 Center Street, Valley Screw, anything. Has, if this is just giving us an idea of what the town may need to have in the future, and something to guide us towards that we have to submit to the state in order to get any funding in order to do that. And in this plan in the back, it's kind of like the summary, right, of what the strat, after everything that they review, their strategies of what they feel as though should happen. It is just their feeling does not mean that we have to do any of it. But we have to submit this to the state. Hope that helps some of you guys.
When do we have to submit it to the state?
December 2025.
Has to be in by the 20, the end of the year.
Communities, isn't it?
Thank you.
Wait, Rebecca, is that Communities or is that both of these things?
That's MBTA, I think. So we're a part of a chapter of the housing, the regional housing plan that the MBPC is putting together. So it will be, will be, just as our former plan was, a chapter within a larger document that gets submitted to the state for approval.
And the deadline on that is, is that the same, is that?
I believe that it is the end of the calendar year, but I can look it up.
Of this year. I think that the housing plan is this year. The MBTA is next year.
Okay.
So, talking about the the production plan, reviewing it and looking at, and we were talking about ADAs, but part of that, ADUs, sorry, looking at affordable housing and the, the way that the math is, and it has nothing to do with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, it's just what statewide, and they say what, what you, where you should be, saying that you should be with, it's 50% is poverty. I think it was like 28% your gross income should be 28%, and that's where your mortgage should be. You know, I was trying to do some rough numbers on my, just my house, my situation, the way that the market is, not just the market itself, but the cost of living. It's, that's absurd to say that that's what you can, that's what you can afford based on your gross income. And that was something that stood out to me, like, there's no way that if I had only 28% that I would be at a certain, the market value, what people are making for monies, things like that. So that was something that stood out to me. As far as the highlighted parts, I don't know about the select board. There are comments in here from the, the Merrimack Valley that will work to replace the 20, this is on page 24. Flooding is considered a high risk in Groveland in the town's 2016 Hazard Mitigation Plan. And it says we'll work to replace this with the 2024 hazard. So that's something I would want to have updated. That, you know, that's what we're here is to make sure that this is, there was one other comment that they said we would pull, I think they called out the planning board.
Something about the age of the properties.
Oh, there was a chart that they were talking about.
Yeah.
Maybe not have, maybe not using in the plan.
Page 15?
Yes, 15, correct. The age of the factor, not whether the apparent large imaginative error and thus conflicting data, we may recommend leaving the chart out, only focusing on the permitting data in the next session. I don't know if you guys looked through that. I read it. It does look like it doesn't need to be in there.
And they were saying that it was technically because they showed 0% of housing made from 2010 forward, actually all the way forward because it was both categories.
Oh, that's right.
But it was not exactly zero, but it was good for the map. It was like a logistics thing.
Lot of wild numbers in here, though, if you look at them, as age groups. I don't, I don't know if any of the public has read any of these yet. But talking about the age groups and the classes and the costs, and I saw one of them was $25,000. It was like 61% of people were paying $25,000 for rent. And I go, I don't know who's paying only $25,000 a year for rent. But it's attached, the ADUs, that kind of stuff that we have. Then some of the numbers were interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I see why they put them in there, but to the greater point, I don't know that it's necessarily bringing a benefit to the plan to have that in there.
Does anybody know where they get their numbers from? Do they bench it from like warrants or?
Well, at each point, they would cite some study, and I mean, you know, how much you vet the, you know, the citations.
It's a boilerplate, right? And they just switch it for every town?
Well, it's probably.
They got to have you somewhere, you know what I mean? They got to have some standard, and it's got to be some city or.
I presume that they have a database of, of city data that they pull from, depending on the community they're talking to, that they can pivot that data to be applicable to the community that that they're pulling for.
I just noticed page 21, they talk about the age of households below federal poverty thresholds, ages five to seven years, 23%. 62, the numbers, what, what five to 17 year old isn't going to be in poverty?
In poverty, yeah.
Why, why is that even a number called out? But it's just there, it's just a chart. They're plugging in numbers, they're doing what they got to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to assume that that number plays towards a greater statistic pulled by the state when they look at funding for something. Again, to the, to the point, I don't know if it brings a huge benefit or not.
And just to follow up, the plan expired in, in July of 2023, and we've been working to update this plan. And I haven't been able to find an exact date. But they said in their presentation that was made to the select board, being the MBPC, when they went through this process, that the plan, this is planned for approval, May, June, 2024, to be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for their review and approval by the end of the summer. So it doesn't give me an exact date in their presentation, but I do know that our current housing production plan has expired.
When we last talked about this, Salem Street is kind of a linchpin, because if it's complete, that puts us over the 10% threshold. And if it's not, it doesn't. So do we know, like, how far are we from being able to use that as?
Safe harbor.
What's that?
Called safe harbor.
Right. So do we know how Salem Street's going in that regard, till we could use, use that?
I'm not 100% positive in conversations with the developer. Obviously, there's a lot of things that go into getting the approval. I know that he has essentially gotten to the point where he's done what is necessary for compaction and things of that nature relative to the fill and the quarry that was currently in its place that was there at the site. And I know that he's been actively working to submit his plans and all of the documentation that's required in order to pull your building permit. So I do know that he's been working with Sam Jazlin, the building commissioner, and a third party reviewer to make sure that those plans are adequate, and they are, in fact, what they are required. As to where he stands with financing and with the state for his final approval with them, I'm not too sure. I know that he's working with them. But when he finalizes that, we would need that final approval. I know the Zoning Board of Appeals had a letter before them that was discussed in terms of a regulatory agreement that needed to be signed off as part of the package that he's submitting to the state. And as part of that package, once that's approved, then we get notification, and then the town can issue the building permit. So there are a couple of steps that he has to take, and how long those steps take, I'm not 100% positive. But I know he's diligently working to try and get this wrapped up as quickly as possible, for his sake and ours.
I have no doubt. What I'm just trying to think about is matching up windows. And like, it sounds like we're getting pretty late in the day on the HPP, and we might not be able to wait until, until building permits issued for Sam Street. Is that kind of what your, what your read is?
So for 40B, it's really difficult in order to claim safe harbor. I know that the Zoning Board of Appeals did a lot of their due diligence when the project came before the board for Sewell Street, specifically allowing for more units to be permitted than what was allowed under the law. And the reason for them doing so was to meet the qualifications of safe harbor with the 2020 census numbers, because those had not been released at that point in time. So if we had gone above and beyond with the approval of that, and we're still in support of that project moving forward, and we also have an approved housing production plan, and we're still looking at utilizing CPC monies to provide affordability restrictions for home improvements and things of that nature, then the town could potentially make claims that we're working to achieve our affordable housing goals. We were, we're close to reaching our 10% with this development, and we have an approved housing production plan. Therefore, if it's a development that's unwanted, we would be able to make those, those claims. But without having those things in place, it would be very hard to argue that you are in fact pushing forward with affordable housing when those, those are not met. So it is kind of getting close down to the wire, as you stated. So it is important to make sure that we are checking off those boxes and that we are doing our due diligence to make sure we can make that argument if something were to come forward.
Would we, would we just, could we just revise the HPP when the, when the building permits come on board?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
We just revise the HPP and submit essentially send a, send a revision saying, hey, now this is permitted, and we're, we can count these towards.
Oh, so for the, for the housing production plan, it does not matter. Like you had mentioned originally, it is not like an actual production plan.
It's more for the third thing, which is the safe harbor.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
That's a separate, if you go to that list, that list isn't going to mention the housing production plan. That list is going to mention how many registered units do they have on the subsidized housing inventory. Right now, we're only at 3%. So we're very far behind our 10% max. So that has nothing to do with the current and or.
That's very helpful. Thank you for clearing that up.
I think it tells us in here that by next year, we'd have to have at least half a percent, then 1%. We have to show that in interest for them to have, show good faith.
Yeah, yeah. Beyond anything else, what the state wants to see is that we're actively managing it, right? We're not just letting it lie and trying to, you know, sweep it under the rug that we don't want to do this, be able to say, that the town's taking steps to actively manage it, and that we're very much doing our diligence to keep up with that number to the best of our ability, knowing that things will always come into play, such as financing, DEP, regulatory, you name it, right? All those factors are always going to factor, be a factor in any project, you know, regardless of the size, but especially with the size of what's going on over at Sewell Street is right, with, with something in that, you know, in that area and of that size units.
Yeah.
But if town showing that they're doing that due diligence to manage that percentage, that we're showing that we're actively trying to be in compliance with what the state is mandating, goes a long way towards if they ever come and challenge the safe harbor, right?
I see.
Cool. Thank you. So I wanted to get back, I was just writing notes, get back on track and talk, just because the whole point of the discussion is to get select board's opinion on this. So.
So ADU.
As well as, yeah, so ADU was the last thing.
Right. So, so there's a list of the strategies that they want to have, and I believe there were like six or seven of them. And they, they tick them off in a list. So.
We have accessory dwelling units already approved a couple of years ago, right?
So this is to enhance, and this is, that's where they, the discussion.
Right. They were asked, they were suggesting that detached would be also.
Adding, adding detached.
If I remember correctly, a couple of years ago, if it worked out that the attached units, there was no problems, no issues, that we would move forward with detached. Do you remember that, Rebecca? I think that was.
Yes, it was approved to forward, but they would be attached. That being said, the state has filed a bill which would require communities to provide for detached accessory dwelling units.
But I think to your earlier point, though, I'm very much in favor that, again, presuming that they are within all our other town bylaws, bylaws and, you know, and building regulations, someone has the right to do with their land what they want to do with their land, right? As long as it makes sense with the land, as long as it doesn't encroach on anyone else's land or anyone else's property line. If you have property and you want to build an ADU detached or attached, it's your right to do so. Again, as long as you go through the proper channels then.
Yeah.
So does that relieve the zoning, the 15 foot sideline setbacks?
No, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I mean, any dwelling would still need to be in accordance with all our bylaws.
It doesn't detach.
They're saying that we would need to write a bylaw and do, we'd have to create what we want to do. We don't have that. West Newbury just did it. So that's where there's, it's again, a strategy, right? They're just giving us ideas. So it's something that we could look at. I don't think it's something that we have to.
Right.
It just, it's a, it's a decent idea. We'd have to look into it further. I was interested in the, the strategy two. They talked about a starter home district, which was.
40Y?
It's the 40Y. I'm not sure, sounds great in theory, but I don't know if that's something that we would be interested in. Again, we could.
I took a peek at the, that there's supposed to be some state remuneration for if you, if you do, if you jump through the hoops, you get some money. And I wasn't quite, it wasn't quite clear to me when I looked at the, you know, the link to the, you know, to the, to the law, exactly how that worked. Like, so I wasn't quite sure about how, what kind of a benefit was, and how you would get it, and whether it's like a, you know, like a good balance to do. So I would, I, I'm wondering if anyone has information about it.
So I'd like to say right off the bat, I'd like to caution everybody, if we're just doing this for money. Because if we start throwing four units per acre, you're putting the cart before the horse. We don't know how many medical calls. We have the chief here. I got a figure we're up about 955 a year. Once we hit 1,000, I believe we got to go put more full timers on. I want to know if the, if our aquifer can withstand any more units. Like Ed said, police.
Is the utilities cost.
I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. And people say, yeah, yeah, the taxes, the revenue, the revenue. But if they start sending kids to school, and it's a $17,000 a kid, and they're only, they're only paying four units, 12,000, and they got eight kids, it's not going to be worth it. So I caution the board when we start talking about money from the state.
It's not, it's not just money for the sake of money. It's money as a balancing, like, your, your concerns are totally, totally legitimate.
Show me the numbers. I want to see the numbers.
You would have to, you want to see if it made sense. And it might not.
Well, again, I think it also speaks to more than, more than just the money from the state. It speaks to the, what we want to see as far as housing in the town going forward, right? And again, even if this is passed, as is or whatever changes, it's not saying that, you know, tomorrow, this is going up and this is going up here, whatever project we're talking about, whether it be starter homes, ADUs, whatever. It's just saying that what we would like to see is this direction apply, right? You know, personally, when I was starting out, I would have loved to have a starting, a starting home plan that would have, would have allowed me to, you know, not rent as long as I did. Right? Again, and that's the kind of thing that we need to think of. We need to think of, how do, how do we get, you know, those type of, the right way of doing certain programs to facilitate growth in the, in the town the way we want to see the growth in the town.
But there will be starter homes. There's could, there's, you know, two bedrooms in this town, right? So as families grow and they move up, they leave that house, and that's a starter home for somebody else.
But, but again, you know, these, none of these are saying that, that stuff doesn't exist in current. It's just saying that one of the strategies towards getting towards a, a managed plan going into the future for the town is to put certain strategies in place that are going to speak to good ways to manage it moving forward.
I still think we can.
The, the activation word is investigate, right? So this is, this, the strategy, you know, strategy one is investigate about ADUs, not, you know, we're doing this and this is the bylaw.
I don't have a problem with ADUs. I have a problem with.
Well, right. And the action word is investigate.
Killing the suburb, basically, you know?
I understand. I understand. We're not, nobody's trying to kill the suburbs.
And I want to remind everyone, this is the first time. And I want to remind everyone, this is the first time that the planning board has been able to discuss the HPP. We haven't been able to talk it amongst ourselves yet because we just got it. We haven't, we haven't had, last month, it was given to us. We said, let's give us a full month to read through it, and now we would have our questions and what we want to remove. So tonight is that conversation to say, how do you, do you like it? And should we remove anything? So I'm glad we had our conversation. But for you guys from the select board, I'd like to hear what you guys would like to have removed from it so we could figure out, get edited and get it submitted and get it approved. So we have, so we do have a plan.
Well, I can tell you right now that when you look at the strategy two, which you were just talking about, it says investigate the models to address creation of starter homes, which are 1,800.
So when you look at strategy two, which you were just talking about, investigate models that address the creation of starter homes, 1,850 square feet. We've already done a little bit of that when you look at the conceptual drawings for 150 Center Street. And a big part of that was to create the work base that would actually support the businesses to bring business into the town. If you want to bring business into the town, you can't right now. We don't have the workers. They don't have any means to actually support the business. And the businesses that we do have are empty. They don't have delivery people. West Newbury is going through the same thing. You wait one to two hours just to get delivery. So that sort of all goes hand in hand.
But that's not just, that's on every business. You just can't get enough workers.
Of course, because it's all based on the housing crisis, which the state is drastically trying to reverse and fix. So, yeah, it is.
There's no magic wand to fix this. There's no magic wand to blow up the town.
But there is a long process of working towards fixing that. And continuing on the same path that we have been on hasn't worked for us, right? I mean, we sit here and say, we want more business, we want more business, we want more business. But if we don't enact a plan that will create more business or support businesses coming here, then we might as well not even talk about it. This is not doing anything except for creating a guideline for us to investigate ways to support the businesses, decrease the housing crisis, and work with the state to make Massachusetts a better place overall. That is the overall goal, and that's what this is.
Do we also have a number, and I don't want to bring this up, but do we have a number of how many people are leaving the state? It's a lot.
Depends on who you talk to.
All towns. I talked to Pembroke the other night. I was in Pembroke, and I was talking to one of the members. They're losing people. I mean, it's South Shore, it's North Shore.
Groveland census is pretty static.
Yeah, pretty much.
So here...
It is difficult.
It's about the same.
We all know it's difficult out there.
So if we don't contribute to solving that, what are we doing?
Did you have anything that you want to remove?
No, I thought it was very well put together. The overall general idea of it was a good strategy to look at and consider when we move forward.
Okay, cool.
For me, when I look at the seven strategies, I see four out of the seven have the word investigate. So as soon as I see investigate, it's like, okay, it's just an investigation. And like we've said numerous times before, this is a strategy. This is a plan. This isn't writing my name on it, saying I will commit to these at all. So four out of the seven, investigate. Let's look at the other ones. So conduct ongoing community engagement. I think that's pretty fair, just to have these open conversations like this and with the community. Number four, where you activate and utilize private and municipally-owned land property. A point I see here, identify any existing town-owned land that may be well-positioned for affordable housing reuse. Doesn't say must be well-positioned. So I'm not seeing any aggressive terminology on this. And the last one was just achieve compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. This is where the overlap happens. But if you read the point, continue working with a consultant, which we've already started. So when you look at this language and you realize we're not committing to these, no one's, the state's not going to come in and audit and check on each of these strategies with us. I think that's important to note, and that a lot of these discussions are separate. MBTA is separate. Garrison Village will be separate. But just the strategies alone, they don't have any aggressive language for me to be concerned with using this as a plan or a guideline.
So, and on that, actually, how do we feel? Language is a lot when it comes to that. And like you said, achieve. Achieve isn't necessarily going to be a thing that we might, we may not want as a town. So do we change the language of achieve and put review compliance, right? Instead of just little verbiage like that that says, we're not achieving it, we're not saying we're going to achieve the MBTA Communities Law, but we'll continue to look at it and what best review is a better change?
Change. I think that's a reasonable...
Thank you.
You might want to say the same thing, where it's activate, review instead of activate, you know, would be probably the same idea.
Yeah, I like that better.
It becomes a little less like, I have to do this, and a little bit more open to, this is just a guideline.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
Thank you. And was there anything else? Any other issues concerned? No?
No, the only thing that I'd say, I think we should follow the lead of some of our neighboring communities, vote the whole thing down.
Are you talking MBTA specifically?
Vote it down.
You're talking, but you're talking MBTA, the MBTA?
Yeah. And let the state come back. And you're not going to sue everybody.
I want to see what the decision is from Milton. It's supposed to come out in the file.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, that doesn't have anything to do with the HPP, which is what we're trying to focus on right now. That's a different discussion for a different day, you know, but, but again, fairly to have, but...
And I, I'm not really sure on it yet because, and I'm going to try to do hard numbers, and when you do the hard numbers and how much you got from the MBTA from the state when doing that, I think my rough was like $200,000 or $250,000 you got. It's not a lot of money that they're giving back, but that's a different discussion. It's definitely something that we would have to lay the numbers out, say, hey, we're going to walk away. If we're going to walk away, this is what we lose, what potentially we lose.
But I don't think you're seeing, you're reading through this production plan, I don't think you're seeing what is trying to happen. It's trying to take a rural community and turn it into a city.
That's what I got out of it.
Why do you think people moved here? They moved here because it's a rural community. If they wanted a city, they'd move to Boston, they'd move to the People's Republic of Cambridge. They moved here, they moved here to have a rural community, and that's what they want. They don't want, they don't want, like Brad just mentioned, four units per acre. They don't want that. They want a wide-open space. That's why they moved here. It's probably why you moved here.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Absolutely, it is, yeah.
You moved here for a rural community. But this plan, what's all behind it, it's to turn the town of Groveland into the city of Groveland. And that's what they're doing. And you can certainly see that. And again, that's why I say, turn the whole thing down, vote no on everything, and send it back and come back with a better plan.
Do you have ideas on a better plan?
Not right off the bat. I'd just send it back to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. We're not happy with this and come up with something better.
But with what guidance? I have no problem doing that, but with what guidance? What do we tell them? To say, hey, I want a better path forward, and this is what I want to see as that path? Not...
Well, I'll throw that back at you. When this was originally come up with, we didn't really put much into this. This was put in by the planning commission. So throw it back to them and have them come up with something better.
So this housing production plan had two different meetings with public responses.
Yes, it did.
And out of that response, those responses, and it, we know that it's limited responses based on the people who are able to come. This is, with that and using just strictly data around the state, they came up with this plan. Again, it's a strategy, but if we don't like their strategies, that's perfectly fine. We need to guide them to, we're hiring them to do it. They're doing it for other communities. We have to tell them what we want in our plan.
Do we, hold on a second, Rebecca. Do we pay them regardless if we send it back? Do we just pay them on the stuff that we approve?
So they received a grant from the state in order to move forward with this, and this also impacts other communities. Like I said, this is, there's a 14 chapters for 14 different communities that were included in this. So that is Amesbury, Andover, Boxford, Georgetown, Groveland, Havil, Lawrence, Merrimack, Methuen, Newbury, North Andover, Rowley, Salisbury, and West Newbury. And then as a portion, we had to put in a certain amount based upon our population size to also accommodate a match for the grant in terms of what we would put in for a monetary contribution. So it's all-encompassing, but it was grant-funded with a small portion being submitted by each community to supplement the grant funding that we received to get this accomplished. So there's no billable hours, there's no you spent five hours, you spent four hours, none of that. It's a lump sum.
So Ed, as, and I'm just going to make an assumption here. If we were to go back to them and say, we want to re-review this entire plan, and we want you to look at it as if we want to keep this a small-town feel, we do not want to grow, we do not want to, we want to leave our open space as is, and tell us what we need to do with that.
So put the impetus on them.
Excuse me, sorry, what's that?
Raise taxes. You don't add taxes, go.
Taxes are going to go up anyways. You add it, the taxes are going to go up.
Well, and I would add to that. I would say if we don't have a plan to control the way we want to grow going forward, we end up with another 200 unit development going in where we don't want it. Because that's what happened. We didn't plan on growth that we wanted, and it was forced upon us because we didn't actively manage it. And it's easy to say, hey, we don't want this, we don't want to grow, we want open space. But then when we don't meet our percentage and we're way below, someone comes in and says, you don't have a choice, that you don't even get to decide how the building is going to look or what's going to happen, take this and live with it because you guys didn't do what you were supposed to do.
But it's been counted on too.
And it's on us to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do so the town doesn't get saddled with something we don't want in the future.
But how many years do we get open space rammed down our throats?
No one's taken the open space away.
And then the other side of the coin is, I'd like to see...
Hold on. So before, I don't want this to go off the rails. We're going to, we're going to open it up for comment. We are going to, but we still haven't heard from all of the members up here yet to go through this plan. So Ed, if you're good, and I get what you're saying. Mark, did you have?
Well, I see both sides of it, and I understand we've got to have something in place. And personally, I don't know what the correct answer is. I mean, I wish Valley Farm was still there and that development never went in. I wish there was about 10 other developments that didn't go in, but can't keep that way. You know, town's grown, and there's nothing we can really do about it. But, I mean, trust me, half the houses in town, if it was up to me, wouldn't have never been built here because, you know, I like Groveland back with the racetrack and stuff like that. So, I mean, if we got to start someplace and this doesn't lock us into, you know, a set of rules that we're not, you know, we have to, you know, conform to, then maybe we should move forward with it, but...
Part of me wants to see what that Sewell Street development does to the town.
Do we have to? We have to have this in by the end of the year.
Right.
And we're not sure when that's going to be done, right?
July into summer.
I know, I feel like we're being pushed.
But again, you know, whether or not the Sewell Street development goes in, finishes, never finishes, whatever have you, that doesn't necessarily impact the plan the town wants to have for growth five, 10, 15, 20 years into the future, right?
Well, in this story...
Potential plan. Potential plan. It's all potential.
Well, this story has already been told a little bit. We have a master plan that we're supposed to be consulting and keeping an eye on that we just, that we just put into place last year. So if we're talking about what, how to strike the balance between keeping things, you know, open as much as we can while still providing a reasonable development and having the amenities that we want and all that sort of stuff and paying the bills, the, I think the line to strike is to look at the master plan and start to work with that. That had a ton of time for community outreach, a ton of time, a ton of opportunity for people to weigh in, and it was approved. So if we spent all that time, effort, and money to get a master plan that we're just going to now ignore, what are we doing?
We haven't even really opened up the master plan yet.
Maybe we should, maybe we should cross-reference it when we're thinking about, when we're thinking about things like this.
Okay. Select board, everyone's good? And any other comments?
How about up here? And really, you haven't really said anything in particular you want off the plan?
I like the, I don't mind the ADUs. I don't, the ADUs, the T-adjacent stuff scares me unless you can overlay everything and guarantee that it can't be built on.
Again, all strategy, I just, I'm looking, does anything need to have to be nixed, removed completely? Do you think, as you went through it, say, I don't like that at all?
The town's going to have to vote on it. I don't think they're going to, I think, right. I don't think they're going to vote on the T. I mean, if this is any...
Absolutely, I understand. This plan doesn't say we have to do it.
That's my fault. I think I'm moving us forward.
In order to get help with doing any other projects, whether it's the ADUs or...
I do not want to see four houses per acre. I definitely don't want to see that. Marit with ADUs. I think we fly it back out and, you know, have a couple more meetings on this. I know we've got six months.
You don't have six months. Summer's not that long. It's supposed to be done at the end of the summer. It's supposed to be done before the X...
By the end of the year.
No, I think it's, I think they said the fall was when they would like to have it approved.
They'd like to have it approved, or when do they have to have it approved?
It runs out at the end of the year.
It already expired.
Yeah, it's already expired.
Yeah, we're already...
We already expired.
Good, we don't have to be doing this anymore. Thanks for coming.
All right. So we can, a lot of you here, try to keep this to the, the point of the conversation is to the production plan. I just try to remember that, and I understand the passion about specific projects and have no problem expressing your position on a specific project. But if we could try to just kind of, yay, I don't like it, no, I do like it, say your piece, and then we can move forward because I have a feeling more than one of you would like to speak. We don't have one representative for all of you. So I obviously want to hear from the public. That is what government is all about. That is how, that's how I view it anyway, is common decency and morals is preached, but they're gone nowadays, so I'd like to establish that somehow. So I will open it up a public comment. When you do come, a reminder, when you do come up and speak, come to the podium, announce who you are, where you live, and we can go from there.
Joe's still got a fast hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the microphone on? Can anybody hear me? I, as your town moderator, I have no opinion about anything, but I do have questions. So I have two questions for you folks. I have one question for you folks on board of selectmen. for you folks. I have one question for you folks on board of selectmen. And if anybody can answer, I have one question for the public. So a question to the zoning board. Over the years, as we-
Planning Board.
I'm sorry, uh, Planning Board. Over the years, as we've worked or inched towards- Over the years, as, as we've inched towards trying to meet our 10% affordable housing mandate, the best way that it gets knocked down is the development, almost the unrestricted development of market rate homes, AKA million-dollar homes. Do you have, or does the ZBA, if you know, have the authority to control and restrict on the top end the development of marketing, of, of market rate homes? Because that's what's killing our ability to get the 10%. If we get to 10%, if we get into a safe harbor situation, we could still go into a lapse situation if there's a continuous building of market homes, just percentage-wise. So that's a general question. Another question that I have for you also, on August 6th, you have a meeting. Is it possible for you to put on that meeting on the agenda, medical zoning as an agenda item, which you brought up, which may be in line with what Rebecca had mentioned, so that if public members learn more about it and they make positive comments about it, you might be in the unenviable position of sponsoring a warrant article on it for town meeting? So those are my two questions to you folks.
Well, I can, I can answer the housing one. If somebody comes in and they check all the bylaw boxes, then you have to approve it.
Okay.
So if somebody comes in with a plan, a subdivision plan, and it meets our bylaws, you can't say no. So that's dizzy housing.
And as, as far as the medical growth for the cannabis, the Economic Development Committee, when they come in and present, so we haven't even seen the presentation yet. They're still just early phases trying to bring it to us, but that would definitely be a public comment discussion that we would have to be able to have public enough.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I do have a third question very quickly. If you know, it might be a ZBA question, but I don't want tires, my tires to be, you know, blown up in the parking lot. This is a conceptual question.
What do you drive?
Arista. At Garrison Street, are, do we have the ability to restrict the scope of the project? So for example, conceptually, instead of 90 units, 15 units per acre, why is it possible to do 10 units per acre? So instead of a three, a third, a, a, a three-story building, a two-story building with 60 units, is it possible, conceptually? Do you know that? Or is that a ZBA question?
I believe conceptually it is, it is possible. From what I understand, the applicant, if they get approved by the state, will be looking to very much work with the town in order to achieve their project if it's approved and if they submit, in a very friendly way. So I assume there will be points up for discussion for sure.
Well, if the other, Chris, if the other Sewell Street project establishes safe harbor, the only way he can put a 40B in place is friendly, right?
Friendly.
That is incorrect. The only way that it would be a friendly, so it, it, the timeline goes by the filing of the application with the zoning board of appeals. So if we do not have safe harbor prior to them filing with the ZBA, then they can move forward with their application. So that, in fact, is the actual deadline right there. That's the cutoff. It's not the approval. It's the submittal with the zoning board of appeals.
Isn't there some deed that says, back in 1929, that that lot is only to be used for senior housing for Groveland residents?
It was never filed, from what I'm, there's nothing on that law.
There's no copy of any deed.
As far as my understanding was, there's nothing holding them from doing that. It's, but as part of your question, as far as the planning board, we have no say over what they can do. The zoning itself might be a different option, but like Rebecca said, if they're applying for 40B and whether they get approved friendly or unfriendly, it's their, they have that right and it's beyond what we can do.
I appreciate your, your answers, and I appreciate your service. One quick question. I wish Kathy was here at the last meeting. She had mentioned that on July 25, next Thursday, Bethany Holmes was gonna come in and make a presentation. So my question, is it on? What time is it here? And more importantly, can public members ask questions and also make comments?
So it wasn't a statement that the, the town was holding any meeting. It's that Bethany Holmes had contacted the town and asked to use the main meeting room as a room so that they could present their plan to the public and those who are looking to attend. So it's not something that the town was putting forward. It's not something that was gonna be done through the select board. But from a conversation with the chairwoman, there was excessive amounts of calls and questions coming through and some insinuations that the town was supporting and or doing something with the project. So the commentary was that we would invite Bethany Holmes to the next select board meeting to make a presentation on what it was that they were proposing. And if Bethany Holmes decides to move forward with the community forum, then they would be the ones to advertise and or communicate with the public and or reach out as to what it is that they were doing. But at least that way, we could have invited them to the select board meeting on the 22nd to provide a presentation. That was the directive I was given this morning. This morning, I did reach out to Bethany Holmes. They did accept the invitation. The agenda for the board of select, the select board will be posted tomorrow. On that will be an agenda item for Bethany Holmes to come before the select board in efforts to provide a presentation as to what it is that they propose.
So that's next Monday?
And that's next Monday. But as for their community forum, all they did was ask us to, the date. We said we would share the date, but it backfired and there was a lot of assumptions made. But the date they told us was July 25th, so we booked the room for July 25th. As to their advertisement of the meeting and what they're proposing, you'll need to ask them. That is not something we just booked the room like they asked us to, like we would for any of the other committees that have asked us to use, or organizations who have asked us to use the room.
Thank you. Question to the public, if anybody would answer. You don't have to answer it openly here, but the singular authority on Garrison Street and almost all major projects is the zoning board. This is an exciting and dynamic group, and it's an exciting meeting. If you want to go to a boring meeting, go to a ZBA meeting. It's very technical.
Hey, two of us stole from that board.
That's right. It's very technical. They're looking at charts. I know ZBA members over the years that have said, "I hate this project. It's not good for my town, but I have to do it because state law compels me." So those are the meetings that you want to pay attention to. My opinion, if you're passionate about something, these guys are really helpful, but they don't, they're not vested in the authority that some of us wish they had. It's the ZBA that controls a lot of these projects. So if anybody would do that as a representative of a group, I know you're passionate, I certainly will probably attend some meetings. I just wanted to offer that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I think maybe we should go to the, if any of the planning board meetings can go, the select boards meeting.
Um, I do think that the fact that Bethany, Bethany Holmes?
Yep.
Bethany Holmes, yes.
Bethany Holmes, the fact that she's still willing to come in and discuss with the community is, is a good thing because it's not a requirement. She, they're doing this out of the kindness. They could say, "Nope, we're waiting until our," it's, she doesn't have to. So I think that's definitely in our town's best interest to kind of, to go through with that in a civil manner. But I just, just my take on it because she doesn't have to. So that's a good, I think it's a good sign that she's willing to do a friendly conversation. Anyone else have? Just make sure your light's green so we can hear you.
This one?
Probably both. Maybe the tall one, too.
Maybe the tall one.
Light? There's a-
Is it green? Yeah, it's green. It's on.
How's that? Yes, no, maybe? Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. I just want to point out to everyone, it says Town of Groveland.
Can we just, real quick, name, name it?
Oh, forgive me.
I apologize.
Christina Manikus, 24 King Street, Groveland, Massachusetts. Town of Groveland. We're not a city. We're a small residential community. We don't want to become a city. I'm concerned about Merrimack Valley Planning Commission having, and perhaps other individuals, having a personal or professional interest in moving us into a city. That's not why we're here. That's not what Groveland is about. My family's lived here since 1960. And if you look at the collective number of years represented by the audience, we're in the hundreds. We're in the hundreds. We are important in this town. And this housing production plan does not make us feel this way. Chairman McNulty, I want to thank you very much for acknowledging that there's a lot of angst in the room. There is a lot of angst. There's anxiety. There's concern that we've been left out. In the housing production plan, it states that you, the planning board, will work collaboratively with developers. Fine? We can argue, you know, is that a good thing, is it a bad thing? I'm not going there right now. However, we need to be, you need to work with us collaboratively. Mr. Naves, why are you on the phone? That's really annoying.
Congratulations.
That's really annoying, okay? You did that at the select board meeting, too. Forgive me, but it's kind of annoying. And I'll move on now. We would, we, we would appreciate a voice in this housing production plan. I know it was requested, it was asked, is a public hearing necessary? And the answer was, it's not required. Well, it's not required, but it's necessary. It's really necessary. I have a couple comments about the housing production plan. On May 20th, 36 Garrison, this applies to the housing production plan, 36 Garrison Street had a technical conference with members of public safety, water, electric, representatives of the town, and five people from Bethany Holmes. On May 20th, they weren't allowed to make any decisions. That was May 20th. However, on May 21st, page 35, I know the page. However, on May 21st, forgive me, I'm having a little trouble finding it, but I have it. 34? Oh, I'm sorry, I have it right here. May, May 21st, in the draft of the housing production plan, 36 Garrison shows up. So what happened? Okay, what kind of deals went on? What happened from the, the first, the plan with the technical review committee, and then it shows up in the housing production plan? Salem Street is here, 40B permitted rental mixed, 48 affordable units, 194 total. We understand that. That was approved. However, 36 Garrison Street hasn't even met the state approval yet. The Office of Housing and Livable Communities have not issued them a tax credit or 40B status. So this should not be here. I know someone had mentioned at the, the select board meeting last week, "Well, you know, you kind of approve it, but you sort of approve it. Maybe you'd approve it or not." As of May 16th, we have 351 communities in the state of Massachusetts. As of May 16th, nine had approved housing production plans. And that was referenced in June, on June, on, June 15th, 2024. It may have changed since then, but nine out of 351. So we respectfully request that 36 Garrison comes out of here. If you want to leave it in, that's fine, but senior housing should, should come out. 40B should come out. There is no conceptual approval. The planning board has conceptual approval, preliminary approval, and final approval. This gives the impression that this project has conceptual approval, and it doesn't. It's not approved as rental. It's not approved as affordable. And it certainly isn't approved as 90 units. So please take that out. If you want to reduce the anxiety, please take that out. It's, it's not accurate. It shouldn't even be there. And we're really concerned about the time lapse from May 20th to having a technical review committee, May 21st, oops, it's in the housing production plan. How does this happen? How does that happen? No, no, I'm not done. I'm not done. Thank you. But, um, we're a small town. We're a rural community. We want to stay that way. We don't want you to increase the density in this town. Garrison Street is a scenic road, and it should be designated as such. It's a windy road. It's, it doesn't need 90 units. Boom, right in the middle of it. We have 2,582 housing units in Groveland. There are conditions for progress regarding affordable housing. If you increase in affordable units over the past 24 months by at least 1%. So 1% of 2,582 is 25.8. I don't think we should be threatened and say the town's not gonna, the state's not gonna do this, or the state's not gonna do that. I, I think we're well within the, the guideline in terms of affordable housing. So please, this is too much, okay? This is just too much affordable housing. This is just too much. I don't know who put this here, what the motives are, but they don't reflect the community. So please revise this, make it accurate, make it reflect our town. Look at all the people who are here and the collective interest in this. Please remove this from the housing production plan. It shouldn't be there. And there really is no rush to get this done. Maybe Merrimack Valley Planning Commission has a rush, but there really should be no rush here. The other thing I want to say in terms of the select board meeting, where Bethany's gonna have a chance to do their little whatever, the select board already has the proposal, okay? I don't know, nor the developer has been granted the opportunity to do this. So it gives the impression that the town is favoring Bethany, and we hope that's incorrect. But anyways, thank you very much for listening to us. The other thing I wanted to say, that there are a lot of people in this room who are considering moving from Groveland because of this. And I don't think that's right. We live here for a reason. People move here for a reason. They stay here for a reason. Please don't destroy the town because that's what that's gonna do. And we ask again that, that, we respectfully request that the Garrison Street project come out of the housing production plan because it hasn't been approved from the state or from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think there's some already on the way up.
Good evening. Craig Weaver from 25 Cannon Hill Avenue. I have a question, probably more directed towards the select board, because I think this discussion came up with you originally. On the May 20th meeting, we were basically, when we questioned about it, we were told it was just a little get-together between the town planner and the Bethany, to just discuss the town rules and whatnot. In fact, there was 16 people at that meeting, representing all the utilities, fire department, police department, everything else at that meeting. And it got into details as far as where transformers would be put. So you can understand why we see, we're, we're a little suspicious about what's going on behind the scenes with this. When we were getting down to details about, here's where you're gonna put transformers, and then on the other hand, we're hearing, it hasn't even been proposed yet. So what would you think if you were in our shoes about what's going on with this? The other thing I'd like to mention is, is trying to scare people into saying, "The only way we can improve our town is destroy your neighborhood," is unacceptable. I don't accept it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead. Yep.
I'll just make this quick because it's saying a lot of the same stuff, but I'm on Fairview Circle, which would be the backside, oh, I'm sorry, Jim Ferrera, 11 Fairview Circle. And being on the backside, the elevation of all our homes is much lower. And I know in Bethany's proposal, they only reference a two-story. And in fact, you look at their drawings, it's three stories. Ground level, first floor, second floor. And when that's sitting up higher than your patio that I just put in, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be looking at a five-story building, as well as parking lot facing the backyard. You've got a full-service facility. You're gonna have people coming and going all hours of the night. It's, it's just, like everyone's been saying, it's, shouldn't be the fit. If it was much smaller, we might not even be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? I, I, trust me, I think we all know why you guys are here. Is there anyone here that is here for it on the other side, or for another reason? No? Okay. So that, that speaks numbers. We, I understand. So thank you. I appreciate it. You're welcome. What now? We have a question. Oh, shoot. I want to grab a microphone real quick, please.
Thank you. Joanna Champram on 9 Francis. And my concern is the habitat, because they can't speak for themselves. And if there is, if there is like a three-story or two-story or whatever's gonna go there, because I feel like something's happening that we don't know about. And I understand people have the right to do with their land what they want. But what about all the animals? You're gonna have to put lighting, and it's, it's gonna change everything. And, you know, I've only lived here five years. I lived on the ocean in Winthrop, a beautiful place. I lived on the ocean, private beach, gorgeous. They overbuilt Winthrop. I left Winthrop to come here, to be in a place that I felt was like, you know, a little paradise. And my neighbors brought me cookies the first day I was there. I don't mean to be corny, but I said, "Wow, this is where I want to live. These are the types of people I want to be around. I don't want to be in the city anymore. I work in the city. It's a nightmare." And I just feel like you're gonna destroy the town, and no one speaks for the habitat. I mean, I have deer in the backyard now that weren't there before because King Street, nightmare. I'm just gonna say they cut- and not to mention, they absorb all the water, which now we have floods in my backyard, which we never had. And I'm a renter, not an owner, so. And I actually may be leaving Groveland if they go through with this, you know? And I was in the process of purchasing, so I just don't know. I just feel like you've destroyed, they're destroying the town. And I've only been here five years, and I plan to be here for a long time. And I know my neighbors feel the same way. I'm speaking for about 10 people right now, so. You know, I guess my concern really is the habitat as well. And people can laugh about that and say, oh, well, they don't pay taxes. Well, if you didn't have bees, you wouldn't have fruit, we wouldn't be here. So you have to think about those things. We have to be the caretakers for them, because they can't speak for themselves. So I don't mean to sound ridiculous, I didn't plan speaking tonight, but...
It's not.
You know, I just, it really bothers me, so I guess that's, I'm speaking for the habitat, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question.
Do you want to tell the microphone, please?
By the way, we do have bylaws in place, and we do have conservation.
Sure.
And just one more question. Did I understand you're right to say that that elderly housing part of it was not, was not no longer in play? Did I hear that correctly, or did I mishear that? That was supposed to be strictly, strictly as an elderly housing?
We're talking about Garrison?
Talking about Garrison.
Yes, Garrison, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding that the application with the state is for a senior housing development.
Okay, but it's not, it wouldn't be strictly limited to that, is that...
From what I understand, the application is for a senior housing development. Personally, I don't know too many senior housing developments that don't have seniors living there, but...
All right, no, I thought I heard you say that that wasn't in play anymore, as far as limited to elderly housing.
In terms of being an indebted property.
Oh, deed, right.
There's no restriction on the deed.
Yeah, there's no, as far as I know, there's no restriction mandating it in any way, except for the intent of the applicant, from what I understand.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Please.
Joanna, can I go on? I'm liking. When I was a kid, Christina Manikus, 24 King Street, we had pheasants in our backyard, and I believe Mr. Parento, in the house that you grew up, there were pheasants in that backyard, too. Where'd they go?
Did you shoot them?
Not answering that question.
You want to go with Mr. Parento?
We used to have frogs, okay? We have all kinds of habitat. There is a, there's a provision in the ordinance of Groveland for Garrison Street to become a scenic road. We would ask that that be looked into, okay? Garrison Street is a scenic road. We'd like to see that happen. Thank you very much.
Okay. Good. Closing, we're going to close up public comment. We have some edits that we have to get done on this plan. And then we could, is that edit it and then re-review it? Or approve the edits and then get it, approve all of the edits, and then that'll be final? Have never done how to do one of these before, so...
So the edits being the one that were recommended this evening, or are there additional edits? Because the edits that you just put forward were to change some language from achieve to review and things of that nature. If it's simple things of that nature, we can just ask the MVPC to make those edits and give the planning board another opportunity to review with those suggested edits? Or if there's more edits that the planning board would like to see, then I suggest that we move forward with those discussions, so that we can then get them to the MVPC, so that they can make those amendments, and then you can review them comprehensively.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
All right. So...
To, I think to the point of the, to the community, since Garrison Street is not, the application is with the town at this point, does it make sense to remove it from the production plan?
I agree, I mean, that was...
Apologies. I said, since Garrison Street is, the application has not been filed with the town, and it cannot be considered, you know, part of the in-process right now with the Town of Groveland, does it make sense to remove it from the production plan?
I agree. I'm looking at that housing site list, I don't see the need of having 36 Garrison Street stating that that's going to be senior housing, 40B, rental, affordable, with 90 units. I can see it as conceptual, just like SD Park, or Valley Screw, or Cedar Dale, or anything like that, but I don't, I don't think it needs to be specifically called out for what type of housing type, or any additional, it's just a piece of property. And that is about it. I don't think...
Is Cedar Dale, is Cedar Dale, um...
Yes.
Come in for a conceptual?
They've had a TRC to discuss what is required. They've had a technical review conference to discuss what they would like to do with the property. That property is a little bit more complicated, in the sense that it's not zoned for what it's currently being utilized for, and whether or not their grandfathered under zoning to continue as such, or whether or not it could be a housing development. So they haven't filed any conceptual plans, there's been multiple potential buyers, but each time they come before us and see the hurdles, or we tell them what they would need to do in order to comply, they don't come back, or we haven't seen an application.
Maybe we want to take that one out, too?
It's still a property, so it doesn't have to be, it's still conceptual. It's not stating that it's, the only thing it says is it's multifamily. We could remove multifamily. It's still...
Right now, it's just a...
You know, it could be a selfplace property.
It's a recreational facility right now.
Right, so, but would it just be Cedar Dale conceptual?
When do they have, when does it lapse?
I believe within the next few months, actually.
The next month?
I'm not entirely sure exactly when, but I believe in the next few months, I'd have to look it up to give you an exact timeframe, because I don't want to miss...
I'm just wondering, yeah.
So I have removal of multifamily from Cedar Dale. So I'm looking on page 35. Multifamily from Cedar Dale, it's just a conceptual status. 36 Garrison Street is, the only thing on that line is 36 Garrison Street, and conceptual for status. Everything else is to be removed. No need for senior housing, 40B.
Agreed.
No, yep.
And SD Park is just in...
SD Park's conceptual. It's just a piece of property. This is, they're looking, this, the HPP here is just looking at open pieces of property on a map and saying, this is what you can, possibility of some type of, but the point is, 36 Garrison Street and Cedar Dale doesn't necessarily have to be multifamily or senior housing, it's just something that can be, that can be removed. It's just verbiage. My take on that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, it sounds smart.
And then the two edits on the review, changing it to review from whatever, whatever it was. I have it marked in here somewhere.
Strategies form, fix.
Thank you.
Change activate to review and achieve to review.
Right.
While we're doing edits, I had, there's a, it looks like there's a missing footnote on page 28. There's no footnote 3. It's referenced, but there's no site.
Good call on, right at the end there.
Yeah.
You're looking at the footnote 2?
Uh, 3.
I see footnote 2, just not footnote 3. This is at the end of the page, the very last word, the words housing goal, and then sub 3, and there's no sub 3.
Yeah, it might be just a missing, a missing reference, or maybe they just put the wrong number in there.
Or maybe it's just a typo.
But either way.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Is it on 29? No?
No.
So then in addition to on the chart, changing the verbiage from achieve to review and whatnot, they're also in the strategies in the document itself, proper, at like pages...
Correct.
Like 30 to 34-ish.
Yep. And we're going to remove, we're going to ask for that mitigation, the flood mitigation plan to be updated from, to 2020.
Right, so that would come out.
Replace 2024, set it to 2016. And...
Then I think on the age of housing, I think we just want to question whether, if there's a stated purpose, having it in there where it is.
Yeah, they recommended we remove it, but that's, it's up to us.
I'd be fine taking it out.
So what are we doing, we're taking out a chief or MBTA as well?
What?
Yes.
What are we putting in?
It's review, is the verbiage we're going to use.
I see people, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. I... Is, let's look back at this, here we go. Yep. The municipal, the review and utilize private, municipality-owned, so that's of a strategy matrix, as well as the verbiage of the actual layout. Okay. And any other edits?
I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I think that's all I got.
Okay. Do, up to the board, do we want to have them do these edits, bring it back, and then vote?
At August 6.
Or vote, vote now, and then they show us the edits after it's up to, right, that, those are the two options.
Those are the two options, vote with the amendments as discussed and approved, or to have them edit and approve at a following meeting.
So it's up, and you guys want to discuss it? You want to discuss it after we see edit? Not that the edits matter, we know what the edits are, the minimal, so...
Is there any additional review that anyone wants to do on the board? Are you satisfied? Is everybody's...
What are we doing with the 40Y?
It's, again, it's a, I think it's a strategy.
It was just a review or investigate was the...
To investigate.
So that, that doesn't bind us in any particular action?
Personally, I'd be okay voting to approve with the edits we were asking for.
I agree.
Then our approval is withdrawn.
Yeah, we've just been going through them right now.
Yeah, yeah, part of it will be that the approval is conditioned on the edits.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Is the board having anything to say?
Hello, can you head?
I'm all set.
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay. The only thing that I would be interested to see is, before approving, would be that flood, the flooding considered high risk. When I, when you read through that, it talks about a lot of...
Where's that?
Uh, 24.
It talks about the 500-year storm, 100-year storm, then 1,000 acres, over 1,000 acres of land is within the 100-year plan, and then you add an additional 200 to the 500-year I would be interested to see how much that goes up, with all the rain that we've gotten. We have, definitely have some severe water problems, and the more we build, the more water we're going to have for issues.
Right, right. I mean...
Oh, here we go.
But again, that's, it is what it is, right? It's just, that's just data.
Right, that's just data, so I mean...
Wouldn't change, it wouldn't change your action plan.
Correct.
But it's interesting to know, and we should have it.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind reviewing it just in general anyways, but...
It plays a role in some of our strategies with building, that's for sure.
It's good that it's noted here as a constraint, because it could be something to absolutely consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think I'd want to, you know, part of the contingency and approval was to have that updated plan included, for sure.
Correct, yeah, that makes sense.
Anywhere you build, you're going to have a hundred-year storm. I don't think anybody builds to a 500-year storm, but we all build to 100-year storm.
Right, yeah. I just, if, say Garrison Street were a thing, that, that backside, that coming down that hill, that's a lot of water.
Will they provide a map?
What's that?
Will Merrimack Valley Planning provide a map?
Not for the, not for the site specifically, but I'm just thinking...
They do have a flood map, though. Do they have a flood map?
Yes. That was part of the discussion you had about the hazard mitigation plan as well.
That's, yeah, right.
Maybe we can get the flood, flood map.
Yeah, so I mean, I think including that is part, is part of the conditional approval for me, in that including the updated plan in there satisfies my, be my point in that, in that section.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
The 2020 info, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, the 2024 hazard, yeah, yeah.
All right. Do you vote to approve with edits, pending edits? Or it's up, you guys make the motion, and then we make a vote? That's how it goes? There's no dictatorship here.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the Merrimack Housing Planning Commission plan with edits proposed by the board tonight?
I'll second.
So, hold on a second.
Discussion, no, it's discussion.
If we make a motion as edited, but receive additional comments from Merrimack Valley Planning before we finalize this.
So we want to reserve the right to review any additional comments?
I don't know, I don't know if we can...
Of course, you wouldn't, they couldn't make any edits to the document without your approval.
Right, yeah, they can't add anything else without our...
You're approving it as written and amended.
I just want to make sure.
No, it's, this is fine. Approval as amended.
We're just talking here, it's okay.
Right. Yeah, and any changes would need to come before us for an approval.
There's no words that say shall, is there?
There's very, there's very little shall in this document.
That's what the lawyer, that's the lawyers for.
Yeah, it's investigate, review, may.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so motions on the table.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? Jason?
I'm good.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
So moved. All right. I think that's it. So Rebecca, I'll get with you with all the edits. I don't know if you took all the note, but we'll go through it and...
I have the video.
And you got the video, yeah, that's right.